Alright, everybody. We're about five past, so I'm just gonna go ahead and start this off. The atmosphere again is as if you're in one of our living rooms, so this is a get to know you. It's not intended to be a debate format. This is a... We have a special opportunity to talk to the candidates. They've taken time out of their Sunday evening to come here and speak to us. So we just need to have a good time, relax time, ask the questions, don't be afraid to ask the hard questions, because this is important. And then when we're done, getting toward the end, we'll cut off the formal question and answer part of it, and we'll go into more of an informal. We can get some snacks. If you need to get a drink or anything, use the bathroom during the forum, that's fine, too. So have we covered the bases?
Quick introduction of each candidate.
Well, yeah, we're gonna begin with each candidate will have several minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll move into the question and answer portion where we have this opportunity to ask them questions very specifically to their person, and that's a great opportunity for us. The last thing is, I'm gonna start us off with prayer to get this going, and then we'll start with Mr. Thompson. And they can do the introduction. So, Dear Jesus, Lord, thank you that we could be here tonight, and thank you for this opportunity to exercise our governmental process where we get to meet the candidates and pick those officials for ourselves, or vote for those officials for ourselves on this earth, Lord. Just help us to always keep our eyes to you and as our Creator and our ultimate standard for everything that is good and right. So I pray that everybody has a good time tonight, that you are with our discussion and with the questions and with the answers, and just help everybody to be relaxed and have a great time talking to each other. In Jesus' name.
Go ahead. Hi, my name is Alan Thompson. I currently serve as the Sheridan County Sheriff. I grew up in a little town in Montana, about thirty miles north of the Wyoming border. It's a great place to be from. I had a, I don't know, what I would think would be the stereotypical Montana small-town upbringing, involved in the stuff within the community, in sports and school. When I graduated high school at age seventeen, I enlisted in the United States Army, spent a little time overseas, a little time stateside, and then I moved to Sheridan, Wyoming in nineteen ninety-three to go to college once I got out of active duty. At that point, I stayed in the National Guard, first serving in the Montana National Guard, and then transferring to the Wyoming National Guard in about nineteen ninety-five. So I graduated from Sheridan College in nineteen ninety-six with Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. Police science is what they called it at the time. And I knew then that I wanted to work in uniform law enforcement in this area, preferably in Sheridan. It was a lot different back in the early and mid-nineties trying to get a job in law enforcement. It was actually pretty difficult. Sheridan was one of those few places in Wyoming that had that, what they call twenty-and-out retirement, and it was a really sought-after place to work. The first several times I tested, there was well over a hundred people that showed up for testing, and you might have two or three openings that year. I was lucky enough to get hired by the Sheridan Police Department in nineteen ninety-eight, and I started my law enforcement career then. About seven and a half years after that, I went over to the sheriff's office, and I felt that I was better served to rural law enforcement, and kind of the slower pace and the ability to get to know the people that you served with, served, served for. You know, you had a chance to have conversations with farmers and ranchers when you're driving around the county on patrols, and you build relationships in our smaller communities and rural areas so that those people, when they do need help from law enforcement, they're not afraid to call. And that has been by far the most rewarding aspect of my career in law enforcement, was being able to have those relationships. In nineteen, or in two thousand seventeen, Sheriff Hoffmeyer retired before the end of his term was over, and I was fortunate enough to be selected to finish his term. Spent a year and a half in that interim role, ran, and am currently serving in my first term and last term as sheriff of Sheridan County. And during those five years, five and a half years as sheriff, I've been very fortunate to have a really good relationship with the neighboring sheriffs. We talk about various issues that we're facing, you know, the crime issues, a lot of the same people up here in northeast Wyoming, so, you know, being able to talk to Sheriff Odenbaugh and Sheriff Matheny and Jeff Hodge, the sheriff over in Creek County, almost on a daily basis. I mean, especially this weekend, we've been texting back and forth about different issues. And that experience, along with the ability to testify in front of the legislature on things that are really important to law enforcement in Wyoming, are some of the reasons why I feel like I'm well-suited to become the next Sheridan County Commissioner. I do, I think twenty-five years is long enough in the law enforcement realm. I don't wanna know the problems anymore. I don't wanna see you on your worst day. I don't wanna deal with those things that are, you know, just not fun. And twenty-five years is enough, but I'm not done serving. And I would like to serve as your county commissioner, because I do have, I believe, a lot of experience with governmental operation, with budgeting, with how things work in Sheridan County specifically. I've submitted the sheriff's office budget, which is about one-third of the county's entire budget, for the last five years, and worked on training our staff members to understand that budget. And the thing that I'm, I think, most proud about when it comes to the budget is Sheridan County as a whole has a pretty lean budget. And from the sheriff's office perspective, you know, we adjusted the budget throughout those five years, and not only did we ask for increases in certain areas, because I felt the need was there, but we also decreased certain areas of the budget. Every single one of the budgets that I presented to the Sheridan County Commissioners over the last five years had some line items, at least a few line items, that I actually reduced. And when you're working with, you know, a huge majority of your budget is actually through payroll, because that's what we do. Our service is customer service. You know, that's really hard to advocate for a pay decrease for your employees. I never supported that. I wanted our employees to have, you know, a living wage, a good living wage, to be successful in Sheridan County. So anyway, that's kind of the experience that I would bring to the county commission, and be happy to answer more specific questions as we move on tonight. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Burgess Haswell, and I'm running for reelection as county commissioner. I was born in Buffalo, raised in Sheridan, went to Holy Name, graduated from Sheridan High School, and then went on to the University of Wyoming where I played some club rugby and ran track for the Cowgirls. And I moved back to Sheridan in two thousand, thinking about my master's program, what I was gonna do next, and met my husband, Regan Haswell, who has a yard construction here in town, and the domestic snowball started rolling. We have three kids, ages sixteen, fourteen, and twelve. After we got married, I got a job doing some environmental consulting, so mostly oil and gas and mining work, doing permitting for those folks. Did that until, and then also during that time, serving on local boards here in the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the Center for Vital Community, just to name a couple of them. And then about four years ago, really felt the calling to run for county commissioner. The county's half-female, and there were no female commissioners, you know, no one with young children, and we used the county and the resources here differently than the other commissioners, and I just really felt it was important to have that perspective. So ran successfully and have really enjoyed the job. I think the good part and the tough part about it is that you touch so many segments of the community, whether it's natural resources and our work with the Forest Service, you know, they have almost five-hundred thousand acres in the county, and we're seeing increased tourism up on the mountain and issues with dispersed camping, to the other boards that we sit on, including the hospital, the fairgrounds that Nick sits on, the library, I'm on that board. It's a lot, and that also kind of makes it the hard part, because you can't be an expert in all of those things, but I love being boots-on-the-ground with community members, hearing, being the eyes and ears, hearing what they're facing, and being able to communicate that with our legislators. I think moving forward into the next four years, we're all aware of the growth that Sheridan County is experiencing. You know, as Alan mentioned, the county provides services, and so as we see the population grow, that impacts all of our departments, not just the things that we do as commissioners. So supporting our employees, I think, will be key. Continuing to provide great services efficiently will be important, so as part of that, you know, making sure we've got that balanced budget. Again, as Alan mentioned, we don't have a huge budget. We're not as fortunate as, like, sublet county, and we probably only have about a year's worth of reserves, which is good savings, but we have to be really thoughtful about how we spend our money. And, you know, it's really been a godsend receiving the ARPA money this last year, because we had so many capital projects that we had to continuously put on the back burner that we're able to finally get to now. You know, the historic courthouse is really old and really needed a facelift. Bricks are coming out of the wall in places, so being able to do things like that has been critical, and our one-time expenses. So, and, you know, what are those projects where we can spend that money that benefits us fifty years into the future? The other thing is infrastructure. As the county grows, we need to be thoughtful of that. I'm chair of the SAWs Board, and we're seeing a lot of growth there. We need to continue working with the city and our utilities departments to make sure we're putting utilities and infrastructure in places that make sense, that follow our comprehensive plan that we put together with the community and the joint plan that we've worked on with the city. That just helps us leverage our dollars and be more thoughtful about where we want that next subdivision. I think the other key piece, you know, is the economy. We've all kind of felt the issues with inflation and being able to hire folks, the shortage of employees. You know, there are some things that we can't directly impact, but I think there are some things that we can assist with and show support for, and that includes efforts for economic recruiting, you know, assisting the chamber with retention, getting input from the public on things that they think are gonna be important ten, fifteen years down the road, because a big part of our job is those things related to quality of life. So I mentioned the infrastructure, but the pathways would be another example. We're the grant holder for the community land trust trails, because they couldn't hold that easement themselves. So partnering in those ways, that isn't specifically spelled out by state statute, is important, because I think by collaborating with folks in the community, we kind of, we can raise all ships, so to speak, so that economic development's kind of a big umbrella, but I think, again, the key's just being collaborative and knowing, you know, what we can do and when we need to really stay within, we like to say, stay in our lane. So looking forward to questions.
Alright. Thanks, Kristy. So, good evening. I'm Nick Siddle, and I am running for reelection as a county commissioner. I've served four years as a county commissioner. I served two of those four years as chairman of the county commission while I've been in as a county commissioner. A little bit of my background, I was born and raised on a small family ranch in Cody. Went through Cody High School, so I was a blue and gold bronc from the other side of the mountain instead of this side of the mountain, but had a really, really great time in high school. I was involved in athletics. I was highly involved in FFA. I went on to be a state FFA officer, and I was a national champion FFA public speaker, and really enjoyed my time at that. So that kind of helped me set a career goal in my life, and so I went to college at Northwest College and University of Wyoming, and I got a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in agricultural education, and I started teaching agriculture and being an FFA advisor in Mountain View, which is a very small community between Evanston and Green River, by Fort Bridger, southwest Wyoming, almost in Utah. And so my wife and I raised our family there for nine years, and we kept looking, we thought there were three places in Wyoming we'd rather end up, and that was either Cody, Buffalo, or Sheridan. And Sheridan was the first one of those to open up, and we were looking for a little larger school with more opportunities for our kids and a little different environment, and so I was fortunate enough to receive the job teaching ag in Sheridan, and I taught ag at Sheridan High School for twenty-three years, raised our kids going through Sheridan High School, and they were both very successful. And now my son lives a mile up the road from us, out west to Sheridan on Soldier Creek, and he has one little boy that's in second grade, will be starting second grade at Highland Park this year. My daughter went to college in Philadelphia at Penn, fell in love with a guy from California, and so they live in Santa Clara, California. He's a marketing manager for Google, and she's just finishing her master's degree in education in California, and I have three grandchildren there, a grandson that's six, a grandson that's four, and a granddaughter that's two, and pretty bummed because she had to leave Wyoming and go back home where she doesn't have a horse at home, and she's pretty bummed that she doesn't have a horse at home. Made her dad take her to look at some yesterday. So, anyway, I'm a fourth-generation Wyomingite. I've been a lifelong Republican, and the last four years I've served as a county commissioner. After I retired from teaching, I did a few different things. I ran a fundraising business for FFA. I did some things, and I just found that I kind of missed my involvement in the community more, and so I ran for county commissioner. And as a county commissioner, like Kristy said, I serve as the liaison to the Fair Board. I serve as a liaison to the Predator Board. Kristy and I both serve on the Tripartite Board and on the SAWs Water Board, and that stuff takes a lot of time and a lot of energy, but it's very well worthwhile. Also in the community, I'm a member of the Elks Lodge. I'm a member of the Big Horn Lions Club, and finally starting to wind down and recuperate, I've been a member of the Sheridan-Wow Rodeo Board for the last seventeen years, and a week ago, we kind of put our heart and soul into running an event that affects the whole community and wears you out in a week, I assure you. But anyway, I think it's a great time to live in Sheridan County, Wyoming. There's not any place in the world where I would rather live, and I believe that in looking to the future, I think that those of us who are commissioners, we certainly know that we have a housing issue going on here in Sheridan County, and Kristy and I are both currently sitting on a committee with the city to look at a potential countywide land trust to try and help with some of those problems. And the one thing that, I guess there's a few things that kind of surprised me as a commissioner. When I became a commissioner, you sit back, and it's easy to sit at one of these candidate forums and say, "If this issue ever came up, I'd vote against it," or "If this issue ever came up, I'd vote for it." Well, when an issue comes up, you get a packet of stuff that's oftentimes thirty, forty, fifty pages of stuff to go through. And then, in my case, and I, so it's somewhere out in the community, so you go out there and look it over to see what the issue is, how it looks, how it affects, talk to the neighbors, talk to the people involved in the issue, and there is no possible way that you can say how you would vote on an issue until it comes to you and until you hear from the community, until you hear from the people involved in it. And I can speak for myself, and I'm sure all the other commissioners, oftentimes we still go into the meeting that we're gonna vote on it, knowing there's gonna be community input and not knowing how we're gonna vote, until we get all the community input, until we hear both sides of the issue. And so those candidates that say, "I'd never vote for this," or "I'd always vote for that," I'm a little bit leery of that, because every issue is a little bit different, and so you have to look at it with an open mind. You have to take a look at who it affects and how it affects, and ultimately what's best for the bulk of the people in Sheridan County, and that's what truly the job of the commissioner is. When I first became a commissioner, one day my phone rang, and it was a lady that, the first year that Kristy and I became county commissioners was the year we had the big old floods. And so this lady called me, and she said, "Well, our road washed really bad during the flood, and nobody's been out here to do anything about it." And she lived out north of Dayton on the way to Parkmont, and so the next day, I called her back, and I said, "Well, ma'am, last, yesterday afternoon, I drove out and looked at your road, and surely it has had some washing difficulties." And I said, "So on the way back, I went to the road and bridge and talked to them, and I said, 'We'll have a blade and an operator out there Monday, and see if we can get you taken care of.'" And she said, "So you drove all the way out by Parkmont to look at my road?" And I said, "Well, what would you expect me to do? If you called and told me about your road, then that's what..." I'd a lot rather go out in the county, visit with people, look at roads, do things, than I would sit behind a desk and read emails all day long. So that's what I'd prefer to do. I like to get out and visit with people and see what's going on. The job as county commissioner is a part-time job, but it truly never ends, because everywhere you go, you go in the store, somebody talks to you about an issue. You know, I had a twenty-minute discussion on the steps of the bank with a guy the other day about an issue, and so you never get away from it, but I don't desire to get away from it. I really enjoy the job, and when I took this job, I said that I would use common sense and good judgment to try and come up with decisions for Sheridan County, and I think I've kept that pledge, and that's what I intend to keep doing. So I'm just asking for support for four more years. Look forward to the questions that you have tonight. Thank you.
I'm just one first. I've got one. I've got several, but I'll start with one.
Okay.
Let's see. I understand that there is a question about putting money in reserves, that the commission has the decision whether they will do that, and I was wondering how you feel about putting more or less money into the reserve situation, and this is for all of you.
Go ahead, you can go first.
Yeah, I think we would always be for putting money into the reserves. You know, I don't know specifically about the funding that you're talking about, so it would depend if there were limits on where the funding came from. If it's, gosh, optional one cent or cap tax, some of those pennies, we'll call them, can only be used for specific things, and you can't put them in reserves, or you can only use them for capital projects. And then, you know, we do quite a bit of grant administration for federal grants that have to be used for specific things. You know, I'm thinking of like our TANF grants that Compass Center for Families and Big Brothers, Big Sisters always apply for. Those can only go out to those nonprofits. So I guess it would depend specifically on what the limitations and rules would be about the funding that we're talking about. Sorry for the non-answer, but...
I think the most important thing that we do is balance the budget first and foremost. Definitely, at this point, there's no need to get into the reserves and use that reserve money at this point, and so if we have the opportunity and we have any excess money, I'm certainly in favor of putting it in the reserves, but the most important thing is that we maintain a balanced budget, so any of that money that we have put in reserves, if the roof blows off a building, if we have catastrophic things, then we do have some cash reserves to go into. So I'm always in favor of putting any kind of money in reserves that we can, as long as we take care of our people and take care of the services that our community needs first and foremost.
So speaking from a position of not being a commissioner before, my answer's kind of twofold. One thing that I was fortunate enough to do as sheriff, you know, if you don't understand the budgeting process, the county commission does the budget for all elected offices and departments in the county, so as an elected official in a different area, you would ask for X number of dollars, and then stay within those confines of those budget numbers throughout the year. We track that every month. We, you know, communicate with the county how we're doing with our budget throughout the year, and at the end of the year, I was always turning money back in in certain budget line items, okay? We never exceeded our allotted budget in those five years. And I have a lot of friends and peers, I guess you could say, that work for the state of Wyoming, and the fiscal year in Wyoming runs from July 1st through June 30th, both on the local level and the state level. And what I see on the state level a lot is a frenzy to spend money in June, because they have X dollars in the budget, and if we don't spend all of it, the legislature won't give us all that money next year. So we have to prove to them that we needed that money, so we're out buying widgets for the whole month of June and spending all of that money. We have, I have never done that as an elected official, nor will I advocate for that. Being in a small community like Sheridan, we can have that opportunity to speak with each of the department heads that seek a budget and explain to them, "I don't wanna see a frenzy of spending in June, but understand that you're probably gonna ask for that same amount to get through the operational year next year." So having that open line of communication and encouraging thriftiness by our other elected officials and department heads, and yet respecting that budget request that they put in the next year. And then the other part of that is, you know, saving. So having a rainy day fund on the county level is a good idea, because we need to have funds available to operate if things go really bad. However, if that is, if you're looking at saving, and I don't know the number, because I haven't been in the commission role before, but three or five years of operating budget, that money is just sitting in the bank, that money should be somehow returned back to the taxpayer. We shouldn't be collecting revenue that is not needed, and we shouldn't be spending revenue just because we have it. So, and I understand that county commissioners have a very limited role in the amount of tax collected in the county, but if I were commissioner, I would advocate for only collecting the amount of money that we need to provide the services that you require, and then saving money to get through those lean years, but not saving so much that, you know, we're hoarding money, so to speak. So it's kind of a tricky balance there.
I mean, there's things like the price of fuel that we just never know. I mean, it's, it, there was a huge increase in our budget this year for that, like everybody's family's budget. We just don't know, and maybe it'll be down by the time we're, you know, halfway into the year and spending that money, so, anyway.
Everybody still wants their roads graded.
Right.
You gotta have some diesel.
To kind of piggyback on that a little bit, I've actually been contemplating this quite a bit myself lately, because the city itself is also considering, has already passed a resolution to keep six months of operating costs in reserves. And I understand that from a housing budget standpoint, because you don't know if you're gonna lose your job, or you don't know if you're gonna have a car breakdown or something like that, but those are pretty significant impacts to a household budget. So when we talk about if things go bad, or if we have lean years, we're obviously not talking about the entire county being thrown in jail for not paying their taxes. So the taxes are gonna keep coming in unless something much more catastrophic happens. So what does a bad year look like? And on top of that, when you, Kristy, said that there were a year's worth of reserves, this last budget was twenty-five point eight million?
That's with the ARPA.
So does that mean that we actually have about that much money in the bank?
We have about twenty-ish, there's, but, you know, we don't know what our employee growth is gonna be, you know, as we see the county grow, things like that.
So employee growth, increase in fuel costs...
Employee raises.
Or, what's that?
Employee raises.
Employee raises?
That was one this year.
Yeah?
To keep good employees.
And then, like you said, Nick, if a roof comes off a building or something like that, that can be a very significant expense.
Sure.
So those are the types of things that you're protecting against by having the reserves ready in that van?
Right, and I mean, you know, as we all know, for example, in the road and bridge department, equipment breaks down. Things happen, you know, we had, during that flood year, we had to replace a couple of bridges and a lot of culverts because of natural things that occur. I mean... I mean, I can't, of course, we don't have a, a globe. I can't foresee something happening that would require a year's worth of reserves, but it might have to be spread out over two or three years and at least you have it in reserve to be able to do that kind of thing, you know? And like Christie said, as fast as we're growing right now, um, it's probably going to come down to in order to maintain the levels of service in that courthouse that people expect without sitting in line for hours when they go in there. But at some point, we're probably going to have to increase our employees in the courthouse a little bit too, just to compensate for the growth. There's, there's days when, uh, our clerks and treasurers are doing 800 vehicle registrations a day right now, certain days. And it's, it's incredible.
And I, it's, I appreciate you bringing up the taxes, Andrew, um, because on some of these panels, there's been a lot of conversation about lowering gas tax, which we have nothing to do with, lowering taxes, which since 1988, we've put on a ballot and the community has approved.
You're talking about specifically the GPAP?
Yeah.
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 Yep.
Okay.
So the commissioners have not, not been adding those pennies. It has been the community because they see the projects, we can get done with those. So I just, I like to point that out, you know? Talk to your neighbor if you don't like it.
What, uh, I, I apologize, I don't know the answer to this, but I figured you might. What role does, do the county commissioners have on, and maybe you could explain what a mill is?
Um, I would have to lean on my department heads that are much more experienced with that.
Okay.
Um, you know, there has, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, so I visited with Paul Paul about that one, when we were talking about the potential of reducing mills and so on and so forth. And, and as we, most of the mill levy money benefits the school district. I mean, that's, and, and they've already submitted their budget to us based on the, getting the same amount of mills that they have. Paul told me that if we reduced the mills by one mill, that it would save the average homeowner in Sheridan County 48 bucks a year. You know, so it's not a substantial amount by reducing it one mill. And I think we're at, and I hate to quote it, close to 30 mills, I think, 16 of which is just for the school district, I think. So anyway, I did visit with Paul about it, um, reducing the county mills. I tell you what I, what I would like to see in terms of that is a cap placed on the amount that your property taxes can go up. And that's going to have to come from the legislature. That can't come from the county, but I'd certainly like to see that. Now, I will say it's popular to say that we need to freeze, um, all the taxes for all the seniors so they don't get taxed out of their house. And I a hundred percent agree on that, except for the fact that it also needs to be income-driven because we all know that in the Powderhorn, there's lots of multimillion dollar homes that snowbirds live in that can sure afford to not get their taxes down. So, but based on income level, I would certainly do that. And I would support anything that stops taxes at increasing no more than like 3% a year on property taxes.
I think it would be helpful, like Nick said, in those solutions that we've talked about with property taxes, um, to, to put those caps and those guidelines around it in terms of age and income, because we want to make sure that it's helping the people that need it most. Some of the solutions are just blanket, you know, let's say we're going to cap it at 5% every year, the valuation can't increase more than that. Well, that doesn't help the people that need it most. That, that still might not help our seniors or those in poverty. So I, I think we can look at those solutions, um, and, and do the most good with them by being more specific.
There's, if I may, there's a lot of questions in there that, um, that are impossible or hard to answer just in this short forum. So, you know, if you look at the state statute regarding commissioners, there's a limited amount of, uh, tax they can reduce. The, um, the mill levies, um, I'd have to pull up the statute, I didn't find it in my notebook here, but, um, there's one specific section that says there's six mills for the schools is the minimum that the county would provide. So they can make that seven mills or six and a half mills, but they can't go below six. So as the others had said, there's only so much the county commission can do to actually reduce your tax bill. And what is driving the tax bill in Sheridan County right now and the increase we're seeing so exponentially over the last five years is property values. So until we address property values and make that a, a fair and equitable system, um, then we're not going to, we're not going to be able to fix anything. I do want to mention that while we're on the topic of tax, uh, there is a new bill that passed, um, effective July 1, that the legislature, uh, authorizes local counties to offer a tax rebate program similar to the tax reboot, rebate program that the state already offers. Now that just went into effect July 1, so it needs, needs to be vetted and, and determined if it's capable, if we're capable of doing that in Sheridan County. So we can't affect this tax bill that we're dealing with right now through the end of the year, but it is something that I would advocate looking into and offering other options for tax rebates in Sheridan County.
And the thing that we'd need to look at with that too, um, you know, the state, when I spoke with Paul about it, had 177 applications for their program. And they are severely understaffed and had a hard time getting through all of those applications. So then we need to think about, okay, are we staffing up? How many more employees will that be? Is that just short-term? How, where are we going to find those folks? But yeah, I, I think that, that county rebate was, is something we'll be looking at for sure.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
You got a question in the back?
Yeah.
Who is Paul?
Paul Fall, our assessor.
County assessor.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with a lot of the.
Okay. Gail?
So, so two of you are current commissioners and as, as sheriff, I know, Alan, that you go to all or most of the county meetings. In your mind, what is the biggest misconception that the public has about the role and responsibilities of the board of county commissioners?
Well, you know, I, I think the biggest misconception, there's a lot of candidates who say, you know, the county commissioners need to, you know, one thing, lower taxes than the county commissioners. But the biggest misconception is what the rule of a county commissioner is, we just have to follow the state statutes. We have to make decisions. Some things that are shocking to me as a county commissioner are, you know, you would not believe how much comments we get on fireworks, pro and con. Fireworks are a big deal, you know? I never had any idea that we had to deal so much with liquor licenses. Any liquor license outside of the city limits, we have to deal with that. But some of the misconceptions are that, that we make a lot of really super important decisions that we really don't make, you know? The legislature dictates to us what the state statutes are and it's a top-down thing and we're there to support the state and make all of our decisions based on that. Truly the most, one of the most important things we do is appoint people to the committees that we have that help us, like the planning and zoning committee, like the, the Sheridan Recreation Board, like the Historical Preservation Committee. And, and those kind of people, and they help us and guide us in making decisions. And that's some of the more important decisions that I believe that we make.
Yeah, I would say that and then probably planning and zoning. And like Nick said, I, I think people think they can come in and get somebody fired or, like he said, lower taxes when it's been the community supporting those extra pennies the whole time. We are really an arm of the state providing services to people in the community. I think another one of our, our key responsibilities is communicating that with our legislators and understanding what bills they're looking at, um, how it would really impact folks on the ground here. I mean, they, they have so many bills they go through, they don't, I don't think every time they have thought it out 10 years down the road or how that impacts rules that we have and now we have to change ours. You know, there've been some recently with, with planning and zoning, for example. But, um, yeah, it's not as, it's not as sexy as people probably think. I mean, I don't know how many easements we vacated in the Powderhorn because people have decided to buy two instead of one. Tens, tens of those.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it, I mean, I'm, I joke because it is kind of funny, but yeah, it's, it's not as exciting as some people probably think.
Gail, I would like to add to your question that, um, you made a statement that I attend the commission meetings and staff meetings. I would like to point out that I also attend the Dayton, RanChester and Claremont Town meetings. Um, I, I, the reason I do that is not because I'm a county entity, but because I need to be in tune with what's going on across the county. While I don't attend the city council meetings, it's actually because that conflicts with the one and only Claremont Town Meeting that you have once a month. So, um, I, I don't attend the, um, City of Sheridan meetings as much, but I do, um, speak with the chief quite a bit. I, I would add from the outside, kind of looking in, that, um, what I hear from a lot of people is the lack of transparency that, um, the commission, um, is, is accused of at right, right now. And I, I don't know how, how, what other ways the commission can post their agenda and talk about the things publicly that they will talk about in the future. You know, it's, it's in the paper, but that's not the only source. It's on the website. And if there was any one individual that didn't have access to a website or didn't have access to the paper or couldn't otherwise find out about agenda items and meeting dates and times, um, I, I would provide that person with a handwritten, hand-delivered mail, whatever it may be. Because it's really, it's so much better than any other municipality in, in the county. I, I try and find any date changes that you might have with RanChester, Dayton, Claremont, and even sometimes the Sheridan Police Department or, um, City of Sheridan. And I feel the county's information is so much more accessible through, um, through online and, um, and local media. So I, I don't know, I, I would consider that a misconception.
Gail, I had one thing that I, that crossed my mind because I've had these calls. People call the county commissioner's office to say, you need to do something about the county clerk or you need to do something about the county treasurer or whatever, thinking that we are their boss or the county sheriff or whatever. They're elected officials as well. And so they work with us, not for us. And I think that's a very common misconception.
There is a que, yeah, go ahead, sir.
I've got a couple of questions, thank you. The first question is going to go back to budget. And when we talk about, um, uh, school boards, and you talked about, uh, right now property taxes, uh, 59.2% of your property tax goes to the school districts. One of the things in an area where there's an excessive of spending, it doesn't seem to be looked at, is if a child goes into one school district, say school district number two, besides, uh, parents want, uh, a child there for six months or a year, or maybe it's in between, uh, it's within that school session, decides to move out of the area or needs to move that child to school district number one. That money stays in school district two and now flows to school district one. And that will stay like that in a declining factor for three years at locations. That's an excess of funds and you've got an empty seat, why would you be paying for a child at a school district in which that child is not, uh, present in learning at? That's number one, and I, I think that's an excessive of funds. The other question is regarding vehicle registration. The vehicle costs of 50, 60, 70, 100 plus thousands of dollars, uh, right now Sheridan County to register a vehicle, it's the, not what you pay for it, it's what the MSRP of that vehicle is. And the county seems to find the most, uh, the greatest amount. They don't care what you pay for it, they care what they can find that vehicle manufactured number is. And then there's a decline in for five years and then the end of five years, you're stuck with whatever fee that registration is for the remainder of the ownership of that vehicle. It's unaffordable. What's the county commission's, uh, position on those two items?
So, um, regarding your first one, we don't have anything to do with that.
How's that?
We, that, that's a state funding issue. That's how the state has set up that program.
County school boards are state-funded? No, a hundred percent?
No, but, but we don't dictate how that program works when a kid moves from one school district to another. And, and to answer your second question, I'm not familiar with state statute on overseeing the assessors and clerk's office. I would have to check with them and get back to you.
The, uh, the program for the vehicle registration comes directly from the state to the county offices, the county clerks and treasurer's offices. And the county doesn't determine the MSRP. The state has a, they pull it up on the computer and the state website dictates that to it. The county is not looking for your MSRP except for what's on your, showing on your registration. So I do agree with you that, that, um, especially in today's market, the cost of vehicles is so exorbitant that, that those MSRPs are high. And I, I do agree with you that our vehicle registrations are very high, but it's not just in Sheridan County, it's all the way across the state. The only, the one difference that could be in Sheridan County, obviously, is that when you buy a new vehicle, it's 6% sales tax, whereas there are counties in the state where it's only 5%. But in terms of those MSRPs, that's all given by state statute. That's not just determined by, like our local county treasurer's office.
So if I could, could add into that, um, so the school funding model is something that's been litigated quite a bit in the past in Wyoming, um, to the point that, uh, it's my understanding, based on news reports that I read, not reading the statute, um, that the, the Wyoming Supreme Court has determined that school funding has to be equitable to all students in Wyoming. So larger, uh, richer communities that pay more tax share their funds with some of the communities that don't pay as much tax. And if you look at the taxation rate under 3913104, you have 17 mills that the county commission must certify. It doesn't say opt into, they must certify. And those are, um, for the state general fund, um, one mill for the board as provided by 94302, um, necessary bills for state debt, necessary bills for, uh, or necessary mills for, uh, county debt. And then it says not to exceed 12 mills for school purposes as certified by the do, the board. Then under what is allowable to, um, increase and decrease, they, they have, uh, mills for hospital, library, fair, museum, public assistance, airport, civil defense, county building fund, road and bridge, recreation, public health, and six mills for the schools. Okay? So you're looking at a minimum of 12, upwards of 18 mills for schools, yet I, I'm not aware of any, uh, function possible for the board of commissioners to allocate how that funding is used by the schools specifically and, and the, and the sharing thing that you were talking about. If, if there is a statute that allows for that, I'd be more than happy to, um, dig into that a little bit, but I've never heard of that before. Um, and then I think the question's already been answered on the vehicle registrations, that's not a county function either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a quick question going back to when Alan spoke a little bit about transparency. And I'm happy to come to the first of those. Meetings in Chicago are kind of a time that is difficult for a lot of community to make. I think it's at 9:00 AM, um, on a weekday morning. I was wondering if there's a reason why, um, the sessions are not recorded? And if you could just speak on that or if that's something that could be a possibility for the future that they could be recorded?
They are all audio recorded and you can request any of the audio recordings. We have just recently put a camera in our, in our room and we're going to start experimenting with video recording as well. But they are all audio recorded. And if you have a question at any time, you can, uh, call the clerk's office, they have the audio recordings and they can email it to you or whatever. So they are all audio recorded.
Yeah.
Christie, I'm going to show my ignorance here, but I'm curious, this ARPA money that you said that we have, what exactly is that? Have you been around on it and what, what strings may be tied to it?
So the ARPA funding was funding that came out during COVID. And every, uh, so Sheridan, the city of Sheridan received some money, the county received some money. Congress really loosened up the strings to that. So that's where we were able to use some of that for like the morgue that we want to build, for example. Sorry, there was another part of that question.
Uh, strings?
Very few.
You didn't answer the question about changing the date of the time.
I don't know, it's been 9:00 AM since I started, but I can absolutely ask. I, I don't know when it might have been at 5:00 or 5:30 and got changed, actually, even. Do you know? Do you know when it got changed?
Historically, I don't know when they, you know, what the situation is on the meetings. Uh, and I, I don't disagree with you, and especially, like, when we had our budget public hearing, we had it at five o'clock in the afternoon, so that people could come. When we, when we try and do those public things like that, we try and do that. And, uh, so I, I guess, the one thing that is important to us, we have, we need to have our, our clerk there, we need to have our staff there, and so, in order to get them to do everything for us, we kinda need to do it during the business day. But if there's a better time, I'm sure we'd be amenable with that.
We do have, oh, sorry, Alan, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I do believe state statute requires that the county commissions meet the second Tuesday of the month, or no later than, I think it's the second Tuesday of the month.
Does it have a specific time?
It's a, it doesn't have a specific time. But, um, Tuesdays at six-thirty is Ranchester Town Meeting, the first and third, um, Tuesdays of the month. So that's, the Ranchester Town Meetings are the evenings, the same time as, um, uh, commission meetings would be if they were in the evening. So I, I would guess, because when I first moved here, they were evening meetings. Um, and then around two thousand, they moved to, uh, daytime meetings. And, you know, with, when you have, um, you know, the fire board meeting, the municipalities are meeting, um, most of your s-- kids' events, um, I, I think an argument could be made that most people can't make a six PM meeting on a Tuesday night, especially during the school year, like they can't make a nine AM meeting on a Tuesday. So I, I don't know if there's a better answer, but I would, I would be happy to, changing it, um, to a time that the most amount of people could attend and be part of the government process.
Yeah, it, you know, it maybe have to be something at noon, 'cause I know, you know, the mayor comes to our meetings, and that would be a conflict with his meetings, so.
I have a question back to tax. I'm not speaking from a lot of knowledge here, but I was introduced to something called the acquisition value tax. And I'm wondering what you, if, one, if you're familiar with it, and two, what your thoughts are on it? Or do I need to explain?
No, I, I, I know what you're talking about, yeah. Um, the acquisition value tax is a property tax, which would be based on, on what your property cost when you purchased it. And so your value would be based on that when you're paying your taxes, rather than what it's based on now, which is the market value of the property. Um, we all know, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, for example, the property I own, I own fifty-five acres out on Soldier Creek, and I purchased it in nineteen ninety-two, and I paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it, with a house and a barn and corrals and everything on it. And I'd love to be paying taxes on my acquisition cost of that, because, you know, now it's valued at, at ten times that. And so I would, but that's what the acquisition value is, and, and there is some talk about trying to look at that. And, and I think that that would be certainly fair, maybe especially when you hit a certain age, or retirement age, or whatever, I think that would certainly be fair. Um, so, so I believe that's what you're referring to, when you're talking about the acquisition cost.
It, it, oh, sorry.
So you would be in favor of what?
Well, I, yeah, I would, I would be in favor of at least, I mean, first of all, we can't do that, that's gonna have to be a legislative process to do that. But I would certainly be willing to work with legislators on that, or at least on some kind of a proposition where your value couldn't increase as rapidly as it does now. But if they're willing to go back to acquisition cost, I, I guess I don't know how you'd step back to there, but it's certainly something worth looking into, if the legislature were willing to do that.
But it is one of the possible solutions that they're looking at, um, in addition to that cap on the valuation, um, as well as then that third opportunity that we have that was a passed bill, to have a local fund, um, that people would apply for with an income cap. Um, so, we'll see. And, and that's a great example of when we wanna hear from constituents, to then go talk to our legislators. Like, you might have some perspective on a benefit of, of this bill versus this one. Um, this might be a little less clunky, logistically, when we, you know, start enforcing it. Um, similar to your questions, sir, about the school districts, um, and then, you know, the, um, MSRP question. And we'd love to hear those things, to be able to talk to our legislators about those.
And I will say that at the recent candidate forum in Dayton, there was a couple of the legislative candidates who mentioned the acquisition cost thing, that, that, uh, they might be interested in sponsoring a bill toward those means.
So if I may, um, I think act, the acquisition-based, um, tax is something that is a relatively easy fix, in many people's eyes, to the woes that we have right now, with, uh, the huge increases that we're seeing. However, that doesn't help the, the five years of drastic increases that we've just had. Because if they started that, I'm sure the base level would stay at what it's at right now. There wouldn't be a reduction in it, it would be where it's at right now. And we need to address the rate that some tax, um, some people struggling to pay their tax bill are at right now. And here's the problem with ac-- acquisition-based tax. If, um, your, your mom is eighty years old and lives in a nice country property where she's been raising cows and kids, and everybody's gone, now she's too old to take care of the property, and she's got forty acres with it, or whatever, um, any, any property like that in Sheridan County is worth a heck of a lot more than anyone paid for it twenty or forty years ago. Um, so then, she, she's paying that, um, egg tax rate on it, which is a lot better than res-- rural residential, and she's probably got a pretty decent tax rate on that, um, large amount of property. And she sells that property and moves into an assisted living place, like, um, some of the places that we have in town that take care of all the building for you, and then those houses are five hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, she's gonna make money buying, but she's gonna have a tax, um, tax rate based on the acquisition of that. So as we have people within our community that are Wyomingites, that have been here for generation after generation, and they, they get successful in their career, and they're like, "Finally, I can buy that twenty acres out of town." And then they look at the tax price on it, when they, when their tax rate goes from what they paid for their house in town twenty years ago, to what they'll pay for that tomorrow, it's not necessarily a fix for Wyomingites. We have to have equitable, I, and when I say Wyomingites, I mean people that have built this, this state, not the people that moved here and kinda drove our rates, uh, up in Sheridan County to what we, what we have right now. Um, so, I mean, we have to be able to, to, um, provide for the people that have built this community, if that makes sense.
So that, that kinda sounds like you wanna ta-- you wanna tax outsiders versus taxing the locals?
You can't, you have to t-- tax everyone equitably.
I agree, everybody should be taxed exactly the same. But I've heard it mentioned on the board already tonight, among three of you, that if you look at, at, uh, either the community that has aged out, you know, that are senior citizens and what have you, or they just don't have the funds available to do it. But I didn't hear anybody, except for your, your final last statement there, uh, say that everybody should be taxed identically. And I, and, and just to sort of comment on your, on that comment you made about outsiders coming in. If local folks didn't increase the prices of their homes, or of their property, or sale, you know, y-- y-- I see it as a one-sided argument, you know? Everybody's involved, including those that have been here for one generation or ten generations.
Right.
Whether you're here for one year, whether you're here for, for a hundred years in your family. Uh, everyone is, is responsible for what's happening here. Um, it's not just those that are coming in and, uh, and not wanting to pay the high prices that their neighbors are, are putting their homes up or selling. I wanna put that out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nick, you, you made a comment about you're, you're working on a countywide land trust?
It's a housing.
Housing land trust, yes.
Can you explain more how that?
Well, we're in the fledgling stages of it, we're having some, uh, actually having meetings right now, exploring it, we haven't made any, any commitments to it yet. It involves the city, it involves the county, it involves Habitat for Humanity, um, it involves some, some developers, um, and we're just looking at the possibility of, of some, I don't know that we're ever gonna have what's, we truly call affordable housing, but attainable housing, in Sheridan County, where we could potentially look at some available properties. And Jackson Hole has a, a pretty good, uh, system that they're working on right now with theirs, and, and Christie sat in on a meeting with it Friday morning. Unfortunately, I was getting a wisdom tooth pulled Friday morning, so I didn't sit in on the meeting, I'd a lot rather sat in on the meeting than get a wisdom tooth pulled. But I'm getting by pretty good now. But at, at any rate, um, we're looking at some of the possibilities of particularly maybe getting property that then could be developed, and, and, and it would, so therefore, because the property was not necessarily owned with it, then it would reduce the costs of the housing. The other thing that I'd mention is, we really need to try and get some more affordable rentals in Sheridan, too. It isn't, everybody in the world doesn't necessarily wanna own a house.
Exactly.
You know, so we certainly need to try and get some affordable rentals for these young people in our community who are making forty or fifty thousand dollars, which is a pretty good job, but certainly can't afford to purchase a house. And Christie, maybe you can expound on that housing land trust a little, since you were in on the meeting Friday.
This was, um, something that came out of the housing study, the, that we, um, went in with the city on, just to talk about what some solutions might be. Obviously, like Nick said, the diversity, um, is a big one, um, diversity of housing and rentals. Um, we're, there's a lot of models out there, um, and, and it's, it's funny hearing the housing issues that, like Shoshone or Lusk are having. Lusk has a housing authority, I had no idea. Um, rural communities are having a hard time finding housing for their employees. Um, so, yeah, there's a housing authority model, there's a housing land trust model, um, Jackson, for example, um, they also have a, a Habitat for Humanity, and they, they all work together. Somebody might have the land, somebody's got a construction manager available to oversee the construction, um, some, you'll put it, some, sometimes you do a ninety-nine-year lease on them, sometimes it's a restricted deed, so there's all those kind of things. Um, we don't know what it'll look like now, we're just, we're looking at it, so. And, and we would be putting ARPA funds in to that with the city. Yeah, Andrew?
Um, to kinda piggyback on that, um, I heard the city, Jackson Hole, mentioned twice. I don't think that that necessarily rings positive bells for a lot of Sheridan, Sheridan states. Um, I don't think we necessarily want to look at the example that they set and follow that. Um, I'm also not sure if, uh, the city buy, or the, or the government, governmental entities buying land, and so the people can build their primary residences on it is the best option. I'm wondering, has anybody been talking about using the ARPA money to extend infrastructure to new places, so that development could happen in a more traditional fashion, uh, instead of the government buying land and letting people live on?
We, we have been talking about that. Um, one of the issues with building infrastructure is that it's a lot more expensive and doesn't move the needle as much as, um, reducing the cost of land in a development to, to make it attainable.
Could you speak to the difference between affordable and attainable?
Well, that's, that's another model you can look at, and I just wanna step back, because we've been looking at other communities as well. This was just a conference call with these folks that we set up Friday, so that we could pick their brain, what's worked, what's not. You know, the county is involved in, in Jackson, um, but the county there has more land, th-- we don't, um, the county itself. Um, we've also talked to Denver Metro, um, they have a, a housing land trust, um, we've talked to groups in Bozeman, um, we've talked to other communities in Wyoming, like I mentioned, Lusk having a housing authority. Um, so, we've been looking at, at those possible solutions as well, yeah.
You know, the, the bottom line is, and, and I've always said, the government's role ought to be to stay out of housing, and let it take care of itself, but it's not taking care of itself here right now. I mean, that's obvious, the, the market value of stuff is, is to the point where, where, and, and you're right, there's a fine line, what's affordable, what's attainable. Um, I guess, in my mind, affordable is what you can make a down payment on and buy, attainable is a place that you can live, at least for the short term. Um, it'd be kinda the way that I would look at it. But, but, like I said, it's exploratory, and that's why we're bringing in, bringing in a lot of people, looking at a lot of options, and certainly hasn't been any decisions made yet on it.
And I, I think every community is different, based on average incomes. So, um, Habitat, for example, uh, the Sheridan Habitat, they just changed their requirement from sixty percent of the median income to eighty percent, um, partly because the price of housing is going up. I think in, in Jackson, sorry to use that reference again, but they use a hundred and twenty percent. Um, so, it'll just depend, honestly, and, and we haven't gotten to that point.
Okay, and I know we like to mention Habitat for Humanity, 'cause it sounds good when we're talking, but, I mean, aren't we talking Habitat for Humanity, it's like three or six houses a year?
That's why we're talking about Housing Land Trust. Um, you know, part, part of that, they don't have capacity. Um, so, what, what would the most successful model for this community look like? Um, that's what we're exploring. Um, the other part is workforce to build those homes, right? Are, are we gonna have developers that have availability to do a project like this? Um, so, it's, it's kind of a Pandora's Box, Andrew, honestly, because there's all those, those pieces in it. I wish, I mean, that's why we have the issue, right? It's not that easy to fix, it hasn't fixed itself.
Right.
And, and we honestly felt like this is a good use of the ARPA funds to benefit the community into the future, like, we want this to be in perpetuity. Um, these houses won't go on, back on the open market, right? It'll go to the next family that needs it, as an opportunity to grow equity, and then move somewhere else. Um, but we want this to be community-driven. We want to be able to put, to provide the funding, um, at the get-go, and then step back.
So you said that the houses weren't, are meant to go back on the market?
The op-- the open market.
The people living them want to gain equity?
Yes.
Explain.
So there are different, again, different models, this is what we're exploring.
Okay.
Over, um, you know, twenty years, there's a cap, let's say you can only gain two percent equity every year up to twenty years, and then that's it, that's the, the value, um, that you would get out of your house. Um, some places, it's fifteen years, some, some places, the equity model's different, so they'll use, um, I don't know, I'm gonna say five percent, um, every year. I know, um, down in Denver, when I spoke to them, they had to change their equity formula because the prices of housing went up so fast. Um, so, that, one of the things we're looking at. Yeah.
Right, and I know these are hard questions, I appreciate you sharing what you know about that. Um, in my personal opinion, I think that, uh, the needle would be moved substantially by getting infrastructure sent out Fifth Street to the east, past the information center. And I'm really leery about, uh, the government becoming long-term landlords, uh, and, but that's just my standpoint.
Yeah. And, and this would be a not-for-profit that we would create, that's kind of what we're thinking now, it would not be the government.
Okay, so they, I guess that was my next question, I assume that someone in the county would be the one overseeing it, and you're saying that a not-for-profit would probably be?
At this point, our idea was just providing the seed money.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just let, let me, go ahead, go ahead. Um, you mentioned a couple times being in communication with our local legislators. I was wondering, you know, how frequently are you in communication with them, and do you communicate with all of our local legislators? Uh, and I, just kinda what does that look like? How often do you check in with each other, I guess?
So, um, there, it kinda depends on the legislator. We have a, an annual meeting during the legislative session in Cheyenne, um, and, and we meet with them as a group, um, and then the rest of the year, it kinda depends on the legislator. There are other opportunities, um, can't remember what time of the year it is, when, when we do the legislative panel, um, so it's a listening session where folks in the community, the school districts, the nonprofits, they come and speak to the legislators. Um, we participate in those, um, you know, I know during COVID, when it was a call, um, it worked really well. Um, and then-- Um, and then some legislators check in more than others.
I'm on the the Chambers Government Affairs Committee and several of the legislators go to those committee meetings. Those are once a month. Um, and during the legislative session, when there's issues that affect um, our county particularly, I mean, I'm in touch with either via email, text, calling, like every day during the legislature with the variety of legislators. Now, like Christie said, some of them are more responsive to you than others. Um, and some of them are very quick to to get back to you. So man, I realize they're all very busy during the legislature, too. And they, if they're in a committee hearing or whatever, they can't respond to you right away. But during the legislature, we're in communication with them very continually and trying to keep up with it. And then and then some of them are really good about running things by us in terms of stuff that they're thinking about running in the future for bills in the legislature, too.
And there's little things like Bo Baitman's daughter and my daughter play hockey together. So we see each other more during the hockey season, so there's more times that, you know, you're in different relationships with them in the community, too. So those are more casual conversations, but and we try to keep it more about hockey. But.
So I would say that my communication with them has been pretty even across the board, except for some serve on certain legislative roles, um, you know, in judiciary or in um, certain legislative functions that would need more interaction with, say, law enforcement from a sheriff's standpoint, or I could see from a commissioner's standpoint, based on certain bills that are that are going in. But um, when there's important issues for my previous elected or my current elected role, I do uh, communicate with each of them and write letters to each of them equally, not just select ones.
I want to ask mine. Um, if you were elected either to or back to the commission, um, how would you address the issue of our businesses having difficulty getting people to work or enough people to work?
So when we opened, you know, I talked briefly about economic development. Um, but one of those examples of collaboration is hearing from those businesses and being able to communicate, for example, with a college. Um, you know, because for some of those, especially, I'm going to say, um, light manufacturing or sometimes I hear the word advanced manufacturing, they've added programs at the college to try to help with training of those employees. Um, yeah, it's tough. And because I don't know, you know, I are people not working hard enough? I I I don't know. I don't want to judge that. But do we need more folks? Absolutely. Um, and I think the college is one place we can get it. I think the quality of life that we try to grow here is is one way. Um, yeah.
You know, I I would, I live on the northwest side of town, so I drove through town on my way here today. And I noted, oh, a week or two ago, my wife and I tried to go out to dinner on a Sunday night. Most restaurants are closed on Sunday nights in Sheridan, as they are on Monday nights in Sheridan. And I think the service industries are where we're really struggling with that. And and I think one of the key things that we really need to do in order to to help those is try and work with the employers on this housing issue. Whereas I know that, um, for example, the Best Western is working with some people on some apartment situations for their workers so that they can do that. And and especially the service type industries, the restaurants and the hotels and motels are really suffering because there there's lots of probably better paying jobs than they have that people are using. So I wish I had the answer to that, but I think the answer is in trying to lower the cost of living a little bit to make it so that that more of those people can afford to stay here and stay in those jobs.
I would like to add on to that a little bit. Um, you know, talk, I I would agree that we have to address some of those things that we can as a community, not necessarily as a government entity, like the housing issues and um, touting our recreational options as a draw to bring workforce in. Um, but I do think that, I I don't know how we overcome this, but one of the issues that we have is a lack of a workforce in those non-service industry jobs. So my high school son, who or my eighteen year old son who just graduated from high school, has never worked a service industry job. Because from the time he was old enough to work, he could get forty hour a week jobs in the summertime in landscaping, in mechanics shops, in electrical shops, making fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour. He, so we have a shortage in service industry and it's coupled by a a couple of things, a shortage of workers and the fact that those were typically held by high school workers as a as a as a temporary kind of a job, evenings, weekends, um, summers, that type of thing. And and those were those those students that are in the workforce are in what I would call big kid jobs. Um, so it it's a it's a huge issue that needs addressed from all points from the community, not just the government side.
Capitalize on that a little bit. Um, the commission just approved ammunition manufacturer as well. Uh, earlier was a automobile manufacturer. Uh, both of them are supposed to be, they're slated to be applied to the airport. A couple of questions on that. Because we're already having worker shortages as it is, those companies were are are brought here with the idea that they're going to be giving, you know, local uh, job to Sheridan's, um, local surrounding areas, but if they're having trouble meeting uh, service oriented positions and stuff like that now, how are they expected to fill those positions? The other is, I think the ammunition is like two hundred plus employees?
No, no, it's fifteen to fifty employees, the ammunition one does.
The article, the article came out and said over two hundred employees.
That's not true. Then the the highest number they mentioned to us was potentially fifty employees. If the article said two hundred, it was wrong.
And the article in Cowboy State Daily and in the Sheridan Press both stated fifteen to twenty employees initially and then up to two hundred plus employees. I'm wondering where those people are going to come from, where we're going to put them, and if traffic studies and things like that were done to support that infrastructure, both for the ammunitions as well as for the automobile company?
In terms of traffic studies that were done, there were not, it's hard to do a traffic study when they're when they're not functioning yet to know how much traffic is going to be there. And the sheriff probably knows more about that than I. But the the road structure out there is certainly structured for heavy loads. We have the airport out there and it's structured for that. There's the possibility of building another road on the south end. There's certainly the possibility of putting a stoplight up here at the corner of of Brundage and Big Horn Avenue and those type of things to try and help answer some of the traffic difficulty situations for that. Um, in terms of what what the county's role is, the county never recruited any of those people to come here. The county's role in that is that the county has a business park and we lease space in the business park. And those people have requested to lease space in the business park, have signed agreements to to serve in that business park. And uh, that's that's the purpose of the county's business park. And and those people, I think they're going to find that they're going to have to channel back a little bit in terms of the employees that they're going to get, but they're going to be good quality companies and have some good paying jobs.
I I will add YDOT is going to be doing a traffic study. Um, maybe they already did it. It was.
They're working on it.
So they did counts in twenty twenty one, and they were actually lower than counts in twenty nineteen. And so they thought they and they had done the counts in May, thinking, you know, school's in session, maybe that'll be a more accurate count. Now, now they decided they were going to do them in July, August to see if there isn't more traffic flow. So we'll see. It'd be great to have a light there.
That was specifically a Big Horn Avenue and Brundage, that intersection that you were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, another thing to to keep in mind is, um, when you look at county roads, state highways in the city of Sheridan roads, um, the big difference is the county roads, we only have like twenty some miles of paved roads. Um, if there is paint on the road, lane markings on the road, it's a state highway or it's the City of Sheridan's road. Um, so we can't commission a YDOT study on a road that serves a different area. YDOT ha- has to commission a a traffic study. Those artillery roads like Big Horn Avenue and Brundage Lane, Coffeen Avenue, they're constantly doing studies on those. Um, so you'll you'll see the the, um, in the in the past, you used to see the little markers out on the hose out on the road that you'd run over. Now it's done by an electronic um, thing that they just put like on a light pole. Um, and it does a vehicle count and a speed count and all that other stuff. So those are ongoing all the time. And as development occurs anywhere within the county, um, you'll see traffic studies done and um, traffic change recommendations coming from those.
Okay, um, we're getting down to, we we try to cut things off around seven thirty-ish, ish, it's not real strict, um, so that we can go into it informal. And if somebody wants to come up and talk to one of you individually, they can. And you can come down from the spotlight and stuff. But I did want to ask this uh, this question before we go. Oh.
Because I have one.
Okay. All right, so that would be the second to last, a very important question. Okay, second to last question, man. Um, two of you are incumbents, but all three of you are currently elected officials. So this can apply to all of you. The last two years have been tough for people and we saw some of our constitutional rights diminished or dismissed. What specific actions did you take in either protecting or hurting constitutional rights for the citizens of Sheridan County?
I'd be happy to go first.
Go ahead.
Um, so this has been a struggle. Um, I I I think we see a lot of and hear a lot of stories about uh, the people that were affected negatively from the the closures of of businesses, um, limited operation hours, um, other aspects of operating a business that made it difficult to survive during that time. Um, but as sheriff, I heard from as many people that were scared for their health and requested um, more from the government than what the government was already doing. Uh, so when we look, when we look at the health um, orders that came out from the state of Wyoming, uh, the existing legis, the existing laws in the state of Wyoming allowed for the state health officer, the county health officer, and um, those those orders to come out based on actual statutes with criminal penalty. And that's very problematic, I believe, for a law from a law enforcement standpoint. Because if if you look at it from a statutory standpoint, those were legitimate orders, um, legitimate law that if if uh, if a business wasn't doing what they were supposed to do, they could face criminal penalty. I'm happy to say that the sheriff's office during that whole time never issued one single ticket, never made an arrest, and never made a demand to any business to do one thing or another. Okay? Um, by not, um, I, so I'd been asked at certain points and my staff had been asked to advocate vocally for this or that, this this business that wanted to do this, that or the other. And those those specific questions were uh, were would would fly in the face of existing law. So you we we could have seen our staff or me being in a position to say, um, this business is now going to be open twenty four hours a day, um, no masks required, no whatever, whatever, and please, please come and enjoy this business. However, other entities could have came in, if it was in the city of Sher- Sheridan, the city of Sheridan, if it was uh, on a state level DCI or even Highway Patrol or other entities, could have still imposed criminal penalties on them for doing something that I would advocate for. So I think we've seen that legislatively in the past in Wyoming where we've passed certain laws to try and combat uh, overreaching laws from the federal level that are in opposition to federal law. And all that does is give our citizens a false sense of security. Um, I'll I'll give an example that the uh, American Freedoms Fire or the Wyoming Freedoms Firearms Act, um, purports to tell everyone in Wyoming that if it's manufactured in Wyoming and sold in Wyoming, federal law cannot oversee any of that in Wyoming and impose rules and regulations on you in possessing your firearm. Okay? Sounds great. If you buy a metal part from China that is shipped into you and labeled oil can, um, and you open it up and all you have to do is tap some threads into it, drill a couple of holes in it, and it screws onto the end of your rifle, and now you have a suppressor? Okay? It wasn't totally manufactured in Wyoming, but it was built in Wyoming. Most people would believe that the Freedom Wyoming Firearms Freedom Act covers them from having the required tax stamp and other stuff. I will tell you ATF is at actively investigating those cases in Wyoming. And some of those laws in Wyoming give our citizens a false sense of security and it's not helping them on the federal level at all. Okay? So from my standpoint, I try to balance the application of those uh, health orders or mandates, whatever you want to call them, with um, education of the people involved in it and letting uh, the 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 businesses work like a capital capital economy should. If you didn't feel comfortable going into that business because they weren't um, being safe enough, then you could take your business elsewhere. If you felt that was a business that you wanted to support because they had a a little bit of a different appro- uh, approach to it, we stood out, we got out of the way. So as commissioner, as allowed by law, I would continue to do that. But I would never give our citizens a false sense of security so they could be prosecuted by another entity.
I would I would say that, um, you know, kind of to piggyback off of what what Alan said, at the time, once again, and I know that there are candidates who will tell you that there's no way that I would have voted for anything that would have to do with masks. There's no way I'd vote for anything that has to do with that. But once again, back to what I said is, read the volumes of stuff, see the volumes of people we were talking to, see what was going on at the time, determine what was the best best and and what the best judgment that we could get from the state. And once again, the commissioner's role is to be a a voice of the state, is coming down from the state health officer to our county health officer to us, and obviously, none of us are medical professionals. Um, and so we're utilizing the best advice that we had at the time. Now, I will say the one thing that that I certainly said at the time, and we were talking about what happens if, if President Biden says that in order to work for you, you have to have a vaccine, I said, no, I would fight the vaccine mandate. I wouldn't believe in them. I would because I would, I would certainly fight the vaccine mandate. And we were as quick as we possibly could to try and get rid of the masks and to try and get our businesses open as quickly as we could.
We were all in support of fighting the vaccination mandate. Um, and the three of us were on the incident management team. Ellen was actually the commander of that group. Um, like the first probably three, four months, um, when these orders were coming out. And I think for us, you know, seeing some of the confusion on what was allowed and wasn't allowed, um, you know, we we brought somebody into that group to specifically reach out to nonprofits and businesses. We had a few people to help with that chain of that that communication. Um, and we don't, you know, we don't oversee the the school boards, right? Um, and and I know in conversations with with Dr. Hunter, you know, and his recommendations that he was providing, not mandates, recommendations, um, we we had incredible open communication within the group and then out to those businesses and nonprofits to eliminate as much confusion as as we could. And I think hearing from other counties in the state, Sheridan County did a good job um, dealing with the pandemic compared to other counties where there wasn't communication, um, there was confusion. Um, you know, I mean, think about how long some of those those mandates lasted in Teton County. Um, I don't know. I, yeah, I would just.
If I if I could add one more thing to that, um, the Wyoming State Legislature has met four times since, uh, um, January of twenty twenty, let's say. Four times, one of them was a special session. And those two statutes that were quoted in the health orders are still in statute today. Those can be changed and they haven't been changed for four sessions now, for four meetings of the legislature.
Okay, um, since you mentioned the incident management team, um, can you confirm, is that the, is that the team that would encourage others to communicate when they saw somebody violating the mandates? I'm talking about the incident command team that, uh.
I I can speak to that. That that was never part of the conversations. It came to the meeting at times, um, some people, some people would say, and it was that that's not a function of ICS. ICS is just a a an organizational um, framework to get supplies and things to people and and notifications and public communication and. to get supplies and things to people and, and notifications and public communication and all of that stuff. It's not a enforcement arm of, of any way, shape, or form. And if that was brought to the attention, it was shifted to something outside of ICS.
We, we were hearing about complaints that would be called in to, to Alan or the sheriff's office, but he was just reporting that to us and saying, not, not gonna write a ticket for that. Not, not a violation, you know, gave him a phone call, situation solved.
The purpose was not to, for citizens to spy on other citizens? That was just a part that happened and you received that communication?
Yep.
That the purpose was for other benefits?
Most of that came through county health, um, because that, that's the infrastructure for health stuff. You know, they, they were the ones that had the, I didn't came from it, but um was part of that conversation because they had PPE that they were handing out, they had hand gel that they were handing out, those type of things. That was the infrastructure kind of um thing. So it was, it was a communication amongst all of those entities, and it was never, uh, um, that was, and that was less than one percent of the issues that we dealt with in the um whole pandemic time period.
Yeah.
And we spent a lot of time like helping sort and stack that PPE stuff and box it and get it to the places that needed it, you know?
So emergency response, the same group that would get together for a flood or a fire.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I ask my last? A quick question, start with Alan, and same question. Um, do you have a personal faith or belief that you live by, and if so, what?
I do. Um, I'm a very private Christian. Um, I found that uh that I'm, I, I'm, I'm very introverted. Um, and uh, you know, I, to the point that, you know, I didn't even mention my family earlier on in this because I'm just private and quiet about that. Um, and, and my family, I've raised a, a son and a daughter um in a, in a Christian household. Um, and my faith guides me uh in, in almost everything that I do. Um, and, but it's, but it's my faith, and I don't um advocate it to anyone else. It's mine.
Uh, for me, it would be the golden rule. Um, I think having compassion because you don't know what anyone is going through. You know, until you've walked a mile in their shoe, I think, um, yeah, treat others like you wanna be treated and be understanding of their situation.
You know, I was, I was raised in the, my grandmother was a deacon in the Presbyterian Church in Cody, and I was raised in that. Um, I'm not a faithful churchgoer these days, but the, the reason is that I'm still very Christian and uh raise my kids, and I believe the most important thing that you can have is service to your community and, and help take care of your fellow man. I, I guarantee you, I never drive by somebody stranded on the side of the road without stopping and helping them. And I, that's how I raised my kids, and, and I think that that's very important, and, and, and so, yeah, that's what I've got to say. Okay, you bet.
All right, well, if that's it, then uh we can move into the more informal, and we call, come stand right here.
And turn on the air.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thanks for inviting us.
Oh, there's uh, there's snacks, brownies, and it looks like some watermelon back there, so please, everybody feels free to have that.
I'm still eating soft stuff only.
The watermelon?
Watermelon is good. Watermelon's good, yeah. Watermelon's good.
So I am.
I just came from the brownies, nice to meet you.